Greetings, members of the Boards of Education and the community of the Sun Prairie Area School District. I am Dr. Sarah Chia-Clarity, here to present to you on our secondary results. This presentation is a superintendent's report to the Board of Education on secondary results, and was originally scheduled to be presented at our board meeting on December 9th, 2024. Due to unforeseeable circumstances, this presentation was postponed until January 27th, 2025, at the Board's request. Therefore, much of what is presented herein reports on data available through November of 2024. In the Sun Prairie Area School District, we measure results in various ways and hold ourselves accountable to our community by the Board through our student results policies. The state reports on our results through our state report cards, which includes extensive data collected through various assessments and metrics, many of which will be shown in this presentation. Our district and school administrators report on their department or schools' results through their scorecards, and these leaders have accountability for the outcomes of their results through a component of their performance evaluation. Professional educators report on their results through their student learning outcomes, which are established each year and are part of their end-of-year performance evaluation. There is overlap between and among most of these results indicators. Lastly, our secondary schools encompass both middle school and high schools. For many indicators, each level has its own performance indicators and thus separate results. Accordingly, this presentation is two reports in one: results report on our middle schools and a results report on our high schools. This will be a comprehensive results report as requested within the figurative fence posts of accountability and results reporting at the state level and in our student results policies and scorecards at the local level. The three pillars of our strategic framework: educational excellence, a culture of engagement and inclusion, and operational excellence come alive in our middle and high schools through the dedication and hard work of our educators across all levels of our system, with a consistent focus on equity and excellence through continuous improvement. We seek to have results in all of the areas that are contained on our strategic framework, and many of these results will be shared throughout this presentation. I am Dr. Sarah Chia-Clarity, the Director of Secondary for Teaching, Learning, and Equity. The secondary schools' report on results will follow the following outline. Our Board of Education has requested information in the following areas: looking back, what historical background or contextual knowledge might the Board benefit from understanding? So we'll look at the context and the historical background of our secondary schools. They're interested in knowing how are our secondary schools funded and how much of the budget goes towards this? So we'll take a look at the budget at both the federal, state, and local levels. We're interested in speaking to where are we now? What goals have we been working to achieve in middle schools and high schools? What's going well? What's not going as well as we would like, or what challenges do we face? What are our student outcomes? And include both in-district as well as outside-district comparisons. So we'll take a look at comparisons across our middle schools, comparisons across our high schools here in Sun Prairie. We'll look at comparable districts across the state of Wisconsin. We'll also be taking a look at our geographically close district comparisons in Dane County, and in some cases, we'll be looking at national comparisons. What are our equity-based problems of practice and what's the progress on those? So we'll take a look at our secondary as well as middle school and high schools' problems of practice and theories of actions that accompany those problems of practice. In addition, there were three board members who submitted requests for additional information, which include academic results comparison among middle schools and among high schools, the prevention and response to behavior, including behavior data comparisons among middle schools specifically, an overview on restorative practices, addressing the question of how are students aware of opportunities, as well as what does intervention look like? Wanting to know how we use data to make adjustments, and then school culture variance across our schools. The Board has requested we also share the vision for the future, our goals for continuous improvement moving forward, and what is needed from the Board administration and our community in order to improve results for our students. We're going to begin with some terms so that we have common understanding of the some terms that will be used throughout this presentation. Improvements across the system are noted in regards to database practices and decision-making. There's increased clarity around the data points that truly mean something for how we're doing, the resulting outcomes, as well as a measure on our performance and our resulting practices in response to our student needs. This is about our students and about being responsible to those in front of us. These are some of the resources that help guide us in these decisions. So when we're thinking about what success looks like, the resources would be our database decision-making guide, which is a document that was created locally that encompasses our district data philosophy around student-centered team use type sources and definitions of performance. We will be looking at our scorecards, and we also have a progress descriptor key and data review playbooks, which outline key metrics, as well as what success looks like for performance outcomes in terms of achievement and growth regarding the assessments that we use. We have our scorecard measures and goal-setting guide, which helps our departments as well as our schools set goals annually. We have a detailed assessment calendar, which outlines when all of the different assessments happen throughout our system at all of our different levels. And there's this term that you may hear economically disadvantaged. Sometimes we hear students who may be receiving free and reduced lunch, students who are living below the poverty line or impoverished. It's a, this is the same terminology economically disadvantaged. The qualification would be any student who is identified for direct certification, so they're participating in one of the programs shown on the screen and do qualify for free or reduced-priced meals. Some of our middle school assessments that you'll hear about are FastBridge, which is a platform that has universal benchmark screening. FastBridge is a program that we used for the past two years in order to not only benchmark screen but also progress monitor our students. It's a computer-based adaptive assessment. And then the general outcome measures are not tied to curriculum but rather skills and grade-level standards. There, it is a nationally-normed assessment and generally used to inform instructional impact, as well as we use this information to plan intervention classes in our middle schools. We use this information to think about groupings for win time, reteaching opportunities, extension opportunities, and in alignment with elementary school, we have shifted now to AmesWeb Plus. AmesWeb Plus is something that is used at elementary school to track the personalized reading plans. And so in order to have coherence across the system, middle school followed suit and also began using AmesWeb Plus this year. It's the similar type of assessment as FastBridge, meaning that it's still measuring, it's a computer-adaptive assessment. It's still, we're using it for benchmark screening, we're using it for progress monitoring. But we did begin using it this fall, and it, both FastBridge and AmesWeb are shown to have predictive outcomes for the forward assessment. So the forward assessment is that annual spring assessment of grade-level standards. In Wisconsin, we administer this for English, Language Arts, and Math in grades three through eight, so grades six, seven, and eight of our middle schools. And then there are also some select grades for Science and Social Studies as well. Student performance is described as advanced meeting, approaching, or developing on those performance indicators. Performance on universal benchmark screening at the 40th percentile can predict meeting or advanced on forward. So if your students are scoring at the 40th percentile or above on AmesWeb Plus or formerly on FastBridge, it's predictable that they would be meeting or advanced on forward, so that's helpful information for us to know. At high school, we use the ACT Suite. So the ACT Suite pertains to the suite of assessments provided by the ACT Company, which is designed to evaluate high school students' readiness for college and career paths. So there are three components that we use from the ACT Suite: Pre-ACT Local, Pre-ACT Secure, and the ACT. Pre-ACT Local is given in the fall. It's an assessment that ninth, 10th, and 11th graders take, and it is a standardized test that we do locally in district. We don't report Pre-ACT Local results to the state, but we do use it in district to think about same types of things in middle school: planning for win time, looking at college readiness, having educators review results to get to know their students better. And so then, that, in data that's collected each fall, is used by teachers. And then in the springtime, those ninth and 10th graders take Pre-ACT Secure. Pre-ACT Secure is a summative assessment that's given in the spring, which aligns to the ACT as well as the ACT College and Career Readiness Standards. So it measures what students have learned in English, reading, math, and science. So, Pre-ACT Local in the fall, ninth, 10th, and 11th. Pre-ACT Secure in the spring for ninth and 10th, and 11th takes the ACT in the spring. And the ACT is a standardized assessment that assesses proficiency in English, math, reading, and science, has an optional writing section. So all juniors in the state of Wisconsin take the ACT in the spring. So that is the suite that we use at high school. Some other terms you might hear is meeting ESSA expectations, the Elementary and Secondary Schools Act. And in order to be considered meeting those ESSA expectations at the federal level, that means that within any school, the performance of all student groups is above the bottom 10% of all students and student groups statewide. If your school is not performing above the bottom 10% of all student and student groups statewide, then you may be targeted for supports and interventions. So TSI label, Targeted Supports and Interventions, means that you have one or more student groups performing in the bottom 10% of all students in the bottom 10% of that group statewide. And we do have one secondary school that is identified as not meeting S expectation and has targeted supports and interventions, and we'll look at that a little bit here. Another term you may hear is multilingual learner. So a multilingual learner is asset-based language around students who are acquiring English as another language. So the state of Wisconsin may refer to our multilingual learners as English learners. You may have heard the term "English language learner." Essentially, this is a student who's assessed and qualifies based on their level of what's deemed limited English proficiency and then receive multilingual learner services or supports. So that is another group that we're gonna take a look at here as a demographic group. All right, so the historical background of our secondary schools. For those of you who were here in the 2021-22 school year, you'll remember we went through the secondary reconfiguration. And at that time, we had our attendance boundaries redrawn, and we created some additional schools. We had moved students and staff across our district at all grades, really, six through 12, and created some new structures in our schools. And so it created the following schools, beginning in 22-23. So that was just two years ago. We have Central Heights Middle School, which serves grades six through eight. Prior to the reconfiguration, this school did not exist. Patrick Marsh Middle School, serving grades six through eight, previously served grades six and seven only. Prairie View Middle School also currently serves grades six through eight, previously served only grades six and seven. Sun Prairie East High School, serving grades nine through 12, previously had our 10th through 12th graders. Sun Prairie West High School, serving grades nine through 12, also did not previously exist prior to the reconfiguration. And Prairie Phoenix Academy serves grades nine and a half, so students can enter Prairie Phoenix Academy halfway through their freshman year and all the way through senior year. This school previously existed, but we did move locations and had a nice renovation. That happened from the former campus that has now created Prairie Phoenix Academy and also houses our GEDO program. So that's the historical background on our schools. Looking at demographics, we can see that our middle schools are slightly different from one another. Central Heights is our, has our lowest student enrollment, is middle of the group for the number of students who are economically disadvantaged. When looking at racial demographics, I would also say they're in the middle of the group in terms of a balance of demographics. They have our highest number of students with disabilities by percentage, as well as our highest number of multilingual learners. When looking at Patrick Marsh, we have our middle, middle of the road in terms of enrollment, but they have our least amount of students who are economically disadvantaged. They also have our least amount of racial disparities. We have almost the same amount of students with disabilities as Central Heights, but they also have our fewest amount of multilingual learners. So really, Patrick Marsh would have our least diverse school among the middle schools, although it still has quite a bit of diversity. Prairie View is our largest middle school. The time that the enrollment data was pulled, had the highest enrollment and also has our highest amount of students who are economically disadvantaged. When looking at our racial demographics, has the highest amount of racial diversity and is, has our white population lower than 50%. So the white population at Prairie View is a minority group there compared to our students of color. They do have the lowest amount of students with disabilities, however, and are sort of middle of the pack for multilingual learners. And looking at our high school demographics, we have Prairie Phoenix Academy, which had 92 students enrolled at the time of this presentation. Prairie Phoenix Academy has rolling enrollment, so that enrollment does fluctuate over time. But by far is our most economically disadvantaged school, with 54.3% of the students being economically disadvantaged at Prairie Phoenix Academy. Also has high levels of racial diversity, with 40% of the student body being white. So another school that we have that has the majority of the student body being students of color. They have students with disabilities at 13.2%, so some of our highest levels of students with disabilities, but our lowest levels of multilingual learners. Sun Prairie East High School and Sun Prairie West High School are pretty comparable in terms of enrollment numbers and as well as the economically disadvantaged status. We can see that East has less racial diversity than West, and just, East has slightly higher students with disabilities and slightly higher multilingual learners. So while there are more white students at Sun Prairie East, there are also more students with disabilities and multilingual learners. So those are the demographics of our secondary schools. We're taking a turn now to look at our DPI, Department of Public Instruction for the State of Wisconsin's recent report card ratings, which were published about a month ago. You can see here that the assessments that were updated for 23-24 are giving us some new ratings. So when we take a look at our ratings in 23-24 as compared to 22-23, there's some interesting things to note. If we begin with 22-23, you can see that Central Heights, Prairie Phoenix Academy, and Sun Prairie West all had alternate ratings. That's because Central Heights and Sun Prairie West were new schools. And because they were new schools and the data is collected across multiple years, those two schools did not have a report card rating other than satisfactory progress. In 22-23, Prairie Phoenix Academy as an alternative school will always have an alternate rating as a satisfactory school. And then we had Patrick Marsh Prairie View and East with their outcomes, as you can see here. In 23-24, then, we had our first year of ratings for Central Heights and Sun Prairie West. Prairie Phoenix Academy continued to be rated as an alternate rating, but what is important to note here is that all of our secondary schools with ratings increased their rating score between 22-23 and 23-24. So Central Heights is meeting expectations. Patrick Marsh remained within the meeting expectations band, but did increase three points on the accountability score range. Prairie View Middle School is our school who is meeting few expectations. However, they also increased three points on their rating, which is a positive trend. It is to note that Prairie View Middle School is our one school that is identified for targeted supports and interventions. Remember, that's that indicator for student groups that are scoring within the bottom 10% of the state. And so they have been identified for both their Black student group as well as with their students with disabilities. And so you'll, you'll hear in their problem of practice how they're working to address that. Sun Prairie East High School and Sun Prairie West High School both are exceeding expectations. And again, you can see East, even within exceeding, is still continuing to increase on their score. And then exceeding at both of the high school levels is really where our students are culminating from the entire Sun Prairie Area School District system, is something for us to really be proud of. So we're gonna take a turn now and talk about our secondary school budgets. This table shows the spending by secondary school plus the district and elementary averages. You're taking a look at the screen and probably noticing that these are not the secondary schools that we currently have. Unfortunately, the data that's available to our business office right now is only as recent as the 2021 fiscal year. We included it here just to give an idea of the amount of spending that happens per pupil at the secondary level. And again, we acknowledge that this is older data with some schools that we no longer have. And we're hopeful that by the time we present again later this spring or this summer, there will be more recent and relevant data to share. This slide shows the total spending at those same secondary schools that were in existence pre-reconfiguration. You can see here that very little federal spending happens at our secondary schools. PPA is slightly higher than the rest, and the average is about $13,967 per pupil in spending at both the federal and district dollars. So this slide shows just the federal spending, which includes special education as well as the titles: Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. Title I is not used in Sun Prairie in our secondary schools, and so there are no Title I funds. And so for this reason, the average spent per pupil at secondary is a little over $300, $304 on average, to be exact. And again, this is data from 2021. When we look at our district spending across our secondary schools per pupil, the average is $13,663 per pupil. And this includes things that are district-wide expenses, things like busing and transportation, what is in our district support center budget to support programming at the schools. And this local spending is coming from local taxes and state aid. Again, data from 2021. When looking at our secondary building budgets, our budgets are based on a per-pupil allocation as well as a free and reduced adjustment that gives schools with a free and reduced percentage above the district average an increase to their per-pupil allocation. Middle schools are given $164 per pupil, and high schools are given $271 per pupil. Free and reduced budget adjustments range from 10% to 35%. This is added to the per-pupil allocation. And so here you can see in the middle column what that amounts to in terms of the building budget, that allocation per site. And then remembering that we also collect fees. So students in middle school pay a $20 fee to cover the cost of all consum-, the, cover the cost of all consumables in their classes. And our high school students are charged $40 per student. So regardless of what classes you take, that's the assessment. Students who qualify for free and reduced lunch or who are economically disadvantaged may file a waiver. And so here you can see, in total, our building budgets for last year spent $1,049,423, and we collected $88,823 in fees. The secondary budget here for Teaching, Learning, and Equity also provides a lot of programming costs. And so the programming costs here are for a variety of things shown on this chart. The Director of Secondary Budget contains dollars that are allocated to textbook purchases that are outside of curriculum adoption. Curriculum adoption is funded through the Assistant Superintendent Teaching, Learning, and Equity, but any textbooks that need to be replaced or updates that happen between curricular cycle renewals are budgeted for, as well as online subscriptions, equipment, staff training, professional development, paying for things like our, the GED program that we have, supplies, and so forth. We also have multilingual learner programming dollars that goes to support multilingual learner translation and interpretation consultants, test coordination, travel, and some of the other things shown on the screen. The secondary budget also includes Avid, which is a pretty large investment. We have Avid serving students across all of our secondary schools. And we have a fee that's associated with each site that's an Avid school, as well as paying for things like college visits and applications. We pay our Avid tutor salaries through this budget. So the Avid tutors that we have, we have both adults as well as students who tutor and get paid. And so that gets budgeted through this budget, as well as some other items here on the screen. Project Lead the Way is a high school engineering class that, classes really, that we have in our high schools. And so there is a fee associated with hosting Project Lead the Way in your schools. Advanced learner services, event registration supplies, equitable multilingual learner, equitable multi-level systems of support. So our intervention programs, we'll be talking about interventions a little bit later on in the presentation. And so we have to pay the cost of online and print materials, as well as supplies and books and some professional learning there. Early college credits, Stark College Now, and Youth Apprenticeship comes with a cost. There are student tuition and contract fees, as well as a consortium fee for youth apprentice. We have the physical education equipment replacement. So there is a building budget for PE equipment and things, you know, the smaller items, I would say, at our schools: the balls and hoops and nets and all of those things. But when it comes to equipment replacement, it's pretty costly. So we have a budget that goes towards keeping our physical education equipment serviced, as well as when there are more big-ticket items that need replacement. And then finally, our music equipment, so band and orchestra. Those instruments are pretty costly, and so there is a budget here in our district office that helps service those musical instruments as well as repair or replace. So this total's about $854,000, which notably is a 6.19% reduction from the previous year. We did reduce our Avid budget by $50,000 and shifted to a local training as opposed to going to the National Avid Institute. And so we are looking to do that again this year. It was pretty successful. Okay, so shifting to our, so secondary school scorecards. One of the ways that we showcase our results and set goals, monitor those goals across the school year, and then determine whether or not we've succeeded is by creating locally-designed school scorecards or department scorecards. And these metrics are established annually by our district cabinet. So every department has a scorecard, and those scorecards are aligned to the pillars of the strategic framework. So there's the Secondary Teaching and Learning and Equity Department Scorecard, and most of the items cascade to our middle schools or our high schools. What's shown on this first screen are two indicators that do not cascade to schools. This is the work of Teaching, Learning, and Equity that's going to impact the action steps for schools next school year in the 25-26 school year. So next school year, as we begin to implement the next three elements of the instructional framework and get really clear on what success looks like with implementation of the first three elements, that will be the work of Teaching, Learning, and Equity. What you see on this screen are our action steps that cascade to our middle schools and high schools. And as you look at the screen here, it's articulated in the action steps column if an action step is for middle school or if it's for high school. Again, they have different metrics and different measures, and so both middle school and high school are charted out here. Each building has its own scorecard and its own metrics. They have their own set for baseline data that's local to their school, and then they use a goal-setting chart, or they use the goal-setting that accompanies the assessment program that we're using to establish goals, progress monitor, and set end-of-year outcomes. The scorecard outcomes are one component of site administrators' end-of-year evaluation. And so here you can see the measures, our universal screeners, the ACT Suite, things of that nature, was, are the outcomes that we'll be looking at in a little bit here in this presentation. The baseline data, the goals, and beginning October rates shown on the screen are for the whole of the middle school group or the high school group, as these are represented again on the secondary scorecard. The next area of the scorecard are the area of environment and equity. And so these action steps also cascade to schools. Again, each site has its own scorecard with its own metrics. So you can see here that the culture of care. We know that students, or that our sites are going to be ensuring that they have high levels of access to high-quality social-emotional learning, and that's going to look different in each school. So one of the questions a board member asked was about school culture, right? And so schools are using their local data to determine what is best needed at their site. So instead of mandating that every school does everything the same, sites look at their individual data, and then they determine their social-emotional learning goal based on the social-emotional learning competency survey that is distributed. So that is a locally-designed way that people are impacting the outcomes at their school. Also, we looked at systematically exclusionary discipline. So there is not local control on the metric here. This would be students that have This would be students that have a school suspension or in school suspension in response to behavioral error. That would be for all of our six twelve schools. We're monitoring that over time. And again, the metrics on the screen are for all of our secondary schools combined. In a little bit, we'll be looking at each school breakdown for its own results. And equity, we have the identified problems of practice. In addition to teaching, learning and equity, our operations also have their information on our our school scorecards. And so here you can see this is the cascade from secondary to our schools in the area of exceptional staff. And so really working hard on onboarding this year and giving people feedback. And so sites are working on this as well. And then we have our communications and community engagement goal as well as operational excellence. And these again are also cascaded across six twelve. These are not locally designed measures, but something that is set uniformly across the system. Our next area then to dive into is our data driven problems of practice and theories of action. So this is a scorecard measure and specifically requested by the board to include in this presentation. To understand what are the problems of practice that our schools are wrestling with? And what are their theories of action that are currently in play in order to solve the problems that they're facing? This all begins with schools looking at their data playbooks. So this is district level data points for our district. We also have site level data points at the sites. We have disaggregated data that's represented in all of their individual playbooks. And this is created annually. It's really a seminal document that we use for strategic planning and SP one hundred plan. So the data that comes forward from these data playbooks is used to create problems of practice by site leadership teams. Once those problems of practice are created, then they think about a theory of action. What actions might we take to help solve the problem after examining this thorough analysis of data? What you can see here, the color coding is going to also be throughout this presentation. So you can see if if we're thinking about a population that's commensurate with national norms or expectations. Then it's going to be coded green, which mean that it's within either the same or within five up to five percent above the national expectation or norm. That would be green. If it is blue, that means we're exceeding those expectations and we're more than five percent above. It's yellow, that means that we are approaching the norms and expectations. So if we are within five of achieving national norms, so meaning five below or less, then that's yellow. And if something is marked red, then that would mean that we are more than five percent away from meeting the expectation. So our problems of practice and theories of action. Teaching, Learning and Equity has a problem of practice and theory of action that we use to create our district plans and to move the entire system forward across elementary and secondary school. Our problem of practice as a secondary as a teaching, learning and equity team is how might we implement the instructional framework to fidelity? So that outcome disparities for our black, brown and students with disabilities disappear across academics, attendance, behavior and special education referral and qualification rates. And then on the right, you can see our theory of action, which states that if we implement the instructional framework fidelity. And we ensure comprehensive training programs are in place and we ensure robust coaching systems are in place. And we ensure that comprehensive data decision support data systems are in place. Then our outcome disparities for these targeted groups across academics, attendance, behavior, special education referral and qualification rates will disappear. So following similar format, each of our schools has a problem of practice and a theory of action. Patrick Marsh's problem of practice, seventy five percent of the time, our response to documented student behavior incidents will involve the use of restorative practices with our black indigenous and people of color students or BIPOC students. So that's what they're focused on. And they believe that if they implement culturally responsive teaching and behavior practices. And if adults in the school create a culture of care and if classrooms establish clear culturally responsive instruction that help build relationships. And if PLCs analyze student data from different varieties of assessments. Then black, brown and historically marginalized students will be more present, engaged and see themselves as scholar. So this is the data based problem and theory of action that the school is working on. And as you continue to see these problems of practice and theories of action, that also helps shape the culture of the school. Prairie View Prairie View is has named their problem as needing to see an increase in math and literacy proficiency. Based on a math and a reading, two assessments from the Fast Bridge Assessment that we'll look at in a little bit more depth here in a minute. But increasing math and literacy proficiency based on a math and a reading for students that identify as black or students receiving special ed services. Based on the metrics here. So the theory of action at Prairie View is first and foremost, they believe all students are learning. If Prairie View staff invest in the capacity of staff to deliberately design, analyze and implement the educational experiences. Intentionally for black students and students receiving special education services. And then all of these indicators occur. Then students will become more active participants in the learning process. As evidenced by an increase in engagement or specific accelerated growth across all areas. As well as becoming equipped with skills and tools in their academic and life journey. Remembering that Prairie View is a school that is identified for targeted supports and interventions for black students and students with disabilities. It is a requirement that Prairie View consider this to be their problem of practice. And so that's why we see both black students and students with disabilities represented here. Central Heights problem of practice, how might Central Heights staff address bias? And utilize instructional practices so that they increase the literacy and math competencies of students. The group's name specifically black students with disabilities and multilingual learners and eliminate disproportionate outcomes on the universal screening of literacy and math. Their work is if they utilize known strategies, practices and feedback. To increase academic, social, emotional behavioral competencies and do the indicators listed on the screen. Then they will eliminate those inequities that are currently being seen. Prairie Phoenix Academy, their problem is how might students and staff co construct a culture of care? So that our gender nonconforming and or black and Hispanic students will have positive outcomes in academic attendance and social emotional data. Well, their theory is that if staff guide students academic progress through personalized education plans and do the indicators listed on the screen. Then the PPA scholars will identify themselves as lifelong learners, strengthen foundational skills and leave PPA prepared for post secondary success. Some Prairie East High School's problem of practice is how might students and staff co construct rigorous and coherent instruction? So that our black students and students with disabilities will have positive outcomes in academic data as measured by the ACT suite. Both proficiency rates as well as the B minus or better course grades. Their theory of action is if they focus on planning and implementing rigorous and coherent instruction. And do the indicators listed on the screen. Then the some Prairie East High School students, especially black students and students with disabilities will increase that proficiency as measured by the ACT suite or B minus or better course grades. Some Prairie West High School's problem of practice, how might students and staff leverage our culture of care? So that our black students attendance and engagement increases. They've got the data listed there. They believe that if staff, excuse me, if staff and students intentionally collaborate to build authentic educational relationships. And they do these indicators here on the screen, then their black students attendance and engagement will increase. So those are the problems of practice and theories of action that each of our schools are working with based on the data that they examine in their playbooks. So now we turn to academic outcome data. Looking at both achievement and growth. The first spots for this data presentation are contained by the accountability merit measures in three areas. One, school scorecards. So if there is a results that we're looking at in terms of school scorecards, we're going to report on it here. Student Results Policy Two. So all data that's reported on Student Results Policy Two is included here. And Student Results Policy Three. So all results reported on Student Results Policy Three are included here. The slides are labeled to indicate which data sets are aligned to these measures. Additional data such as disaggregated data is shown. And limited to racial demographics, special education status, status and multilingual learner status unless economically disadvantaged data is available. If further disaggregation is desired by the board, this could be collected and shared in an upcoming secondary schools results update. As there will be two more reports to the board scheduled for this year. Or through a scheduled sit down conversation and review. We're also going to be looking at our comparable peers within the state of Wisconsin. As well as our geographic peers here in Dane County. So let's begin. We'll begin with SR two, our student result, our student results policy two, the board result expectation number one, which is in literacy. The goal is to make reasonable progress each year towards being literate and numerate across academic disciplines. To achieve academic growth with a focus on improving academic outcomes for students experiencing significantly lower rates of success. So when we reported on SR two earlier this year, we saw that we were meeting our goal in the reading composite at eighth grade. As well as meeting our goal in the pre ACT reading tenth grade result. So the goals were to have either or both growth or achievement met. So in achievement, we were looking at having sixty percent or more students exceeding the fortieth percentile. Because as we shared, as I shared earlier, that would predict proficient or advanced on the forward exam. And we had sixty three percent of students meet that achievement mark. On the pre ACT reading, we were looking to have students described as having thirty one percent or more meeting or exceeding college readiness benchmarks, an indicator that they're well prepared to succeed in college or career. And we had forty two percent so well exceeding that goal. So we we met both of these literacy assessment measures. So we'll dive now into middle school literacy data. This data measure is from Ames Web Plus. Given that we were, we gave this assessment this fall. Ames Web Plus is an assessment of reading, remembering that we transitioned away from Fast Bridge, which was named on SR two. Here you can see that this fall. Where there is the red circle, seventy two point five percent of our students are meeting or exceeding benchmark expectations in middle school reading. The results reported on SR two are specific to eighth graders. So this fall, we had seventy two point two percent of our students who were meeting or exceeding benchmark. An eighth grade. And again, this is a scorecard measure as well. You can see the breakdown by school and different performance levels by grade. When we look to disaggregate the data. Similar data measured again through Ames Web Plus. We can see that there are varying performance across our demographic groups. A challenge we're working to improve upon through those problems of practice. I think every problem of practice, we're looking at our black students. Our black students are underperforming when we compare their black students to our other racial demographic groups. Remembering that the middle school overall achievement score for fall was seventy two point five percent at or above benchmark. So for any racial demographic group who is performing above that, that would be our Asian group of students. And our white students, they are performing above average. Our black students are two or more races group and our Hispanic Latino group is performing under that. So when we have our students performing significantly under that, that's where we see those gaps occur. And again, that's what our problems of practice on the implementation of our instructional framework is designed to disrupt. When we look at our students with disabilities and our multilingual learner groups, we can also see significant gaps. We have some of the greatest gaps in the system occurring with these two groups. And so again, it's a challenge that we're working through in our those problems of practice theories of action. And the different ways that we support our leaders in implementing site plans and leaders supporting their staff. And improving the results for these two groups. When you're looking at seventy two point five percent of students at or above benchmark and you see results such as thirty one point three percent or forty five point eight percent. Those are pretty significant gaps that we're working through. When we're looking at our eighth grade disaggregated data specifically. These similar trends exist that our white and Asian students are outperforming our black two or more races or Hispanic Latino groups. And as our students are getting older, we are seeing even higher gaps beginning in our eighth grade as compared to middle school overall. When we look at eighth grade students with disabilities as well as eighth grade multilingual learners. Again, this trend continues of the gap widening that is happening for these two groups of students. However, when we look at our literacy achievement over time, we collected this, these, these assessments throughout the past six assessment cycles. Using the Fast Bridge Assessment, three times in the twenty two, twenty three school year and three times in the twenty three, twenty four school year. And what you can see on this slide is that while we acknowledge persistent and pervasive gaps exist, particularly for black students, students with disabilities and multilingual learners. We have had continuous and steady growth overall across all of the past six assessment windows. We've moved all students at middle school from fifty point nine percent to sixty point three percent meeting or exceeding those benchmarks, which is a nine point four percent increase overall across the past six assessment windows. When we're looking at eighth grade. And we're seeing that in the fall of twenty two, twenty three, we had students performing at forty three percent meeting or exceeding benchmark. And by the spring of twenty three, twenty four, we had sixty two point eight percent meeting or exceeding benchmark. That's nineteen point eight percent increase over time. And so some, some strong results to celebrate. While acknowledging our work remains focused squarely on the demographic groups that need our highest amount of attention. When we turned to the forward exam, we can see our comparison districts. Comparison districts are districts that have the same enrollment population, same demographic groups. You know, same, they're more similar to us in terms of what their schools look like, maybe geographically further away from us. But the schools are more similar, I mean similar instead of same. These districts were Eau Claire, Janesville, Sheboygan, Oshkosh, Wausau, West Dallas, Stevens Point, Wauwautosa, Fond du Lac and Waukesha. So here this graph shows the percent of students advanced or proficient in sixth through eighth grade ELA on forward, and this is represented across time. So this is twenty sixteen through the twenty twenty four. This data shows that in twenty sixteen, we were the highest performing among our peer group on forward. And as you can see, over time, we, we have followed the similar trend line as all of many other districts. You see in twenty twenty one, a pretty significant decline that of course is when we were in the years of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And then in recent years, you can see us accelerating. We are the blue line. And we are really in the past year or so accelerating our results. You may be curious about the scale on the left hand side, the vertical axis that's labeled advanced and proficient test results. And has a scale from zero to a hundred and eighty. That's because the the data system that was used to pull these results is through comparative analytics, which is a program and that pulls together the data. And the way that it shows it here is that it adds sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade altogether. So our sixth grade ELA outcomes this year were fifty one point one percent proficient and advanced. Seventh grade were fifty three point one and eighth grade was fifty four point seven. And so when you total all of that together, that's a hundred and fifty eight point nine percent. So when you look to some prairie achieving at one hundred and fifty eight point nine percent in twenty twenty four, that aligns with the scale score on the left hand side. The slide shows us a little bit more clearly is the blue line. And you can see that we are performing above average. The average for this group is a hundred and fifty one point seven, we're at a hundred and fifty eight point nine. So you can also see here that in the past year, we have been accelerating faster than all of the other districts in terms of performance outcomes and the sixth through eighth grade ELA performance on forward. So the forward assessment in English Language Arts is also, you know, it's given to all students in eighth grade in the state of Wisconsin. This is an indicator that we report on our student results policy two. And here breaks down the proficiency rankings in terms of advanced, proficient, below basic or basic. And also has a round box for students who did not test. So these are our comparable districts, the ones from the previous slides. But it shows us a different way. You can see that we are here on this screen for eighth grade, the second highest performing among our comparable districts. We also appear to have a significant number of students who are performing in the advanced group. Right? So where you can see the main difference between these districts on this slide, we're pretty similar among the level of proficiency, but we really are doing a good job of having students performing in the advanced area as well as fewer students performing in the below basic group, which is the purple indicator here. And this was from the, the last assessment in twenty twenty four, the spring of twenty twenty four. And looking at the forward test results with our Dane County comparisons, I do, I do yield caution to this slide. Other than geography, we really don't have comparisons in Dane County. So meaning none of the districts listed here, DeForest, Madison Metropolitan, Milton Cross Plains, Monona Grove, Mount Horeb, Oregon, Stoughton, Verona, Wanakee. None of them are in our district comparable group. Because we don't have similar demographics or similar size, but for the sake of looking across the county, you can see the performance trend here. We are below average among this group. But do follow similar trend lines, right? So you can sort of see a relatively flat performance slightly declining until the pandemic where things really took a hit and then have been coming back up ever since. So those gray bars are showing the averages. And again, we acknowledge we are among below average among the group here in Dane County. When we are looking at forward for eighth grade as compared to the county. Here you can see that we have fewer students in the advanced category while our proficient levels are sort of on par, more commensurate, I would say, with some of the districts in Dane County. There are a considerable number of districts that have more students in the advanced category, again, saying caution that we are pretty dissimilar in terms of not only the demographics, but the curriculum that we use to teach with as well. So we turn now to high school literacy. So high school literacy is assessed using the ACT suite assessment that pre ACT local. Remembering is we, we do that in the fall. So grades nine, ten and eleven take pre ACT local in the fall. Pre ACT secure is given to grades nine and ten in the spring. ACT is given to grade eleven in the spring. So here we're looking at the data across time showing that forty five point three percent of ninth through length, ninth through eleventh graders met college benchmark in reading in the fall of twenty twenty three and fifty two point five met college benchmark in reading in the fall of twenty four, twenty five. Excuse me, twenty three, twenty four was forty five point five, twenty four, twenty five was fifty two point five. And so again, that's a pretty measurable increase. That's a nearly seven percent increase in a year's time in terms of students who are meeting those benchmarks. Tenth grade is something that we report on SR two, and you can see how tenth grade is performing here as well, specifically. What we do notice in breaking this down by grade is that our student performance is starting to dip. So the students who are coming in at ninth and then moving to tenth and then moving to eleventh. This literacy achievement is slightly backsliding. That's something for us to be aware of and disrupt as well. Can also see the data broken down by school. When we look at literacy achievement and disaggregate it, remembering that fifty two point five percent of the students were meeting at or above benchmark in the fall. So that would be the overall population. The gaps persist when we, there is either a negative gap or a positive gap as you get further away from that overall score. So our Asian group is pretty much commensurate with that. Our white students are scoring slightly higher at sixty one percent. Two or more races, pretty commensurate. And then our Hispanic Latino and Black and African American groups have pretty significant gaps. And as what you can see here, the, we, the gaps are persistent and pervasive because we have students who are falling in that the red bars here, which means that they're pretty significantly below and off track for college readiness. When we look at our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners, the gaps get even wider. So again, definitely trends to focus on and work toward disruption. And the next three elements of our instructional framework are really pushing us to take a deeper dive at different ways in which we instruct and assess students, communicate with students and have students take agency over their learning and paying a particular focus to students who may have neurodivergent learning as well as multilingualistic learning capacities. Specifically looking at tenth grade, since tenth grade is what we report on for SR two. We can see that tenth grade overall was fifty three point eight percent at or above benchmark. And so you can see the, the gaps here as well for our black students, students with two or more races and our Hispanic and Latino populations. With our white students and Asian students performing higher. Looking at tenth graders with disabilities as well as tenth graders who are multilingual learners. Both of those groups are performing at twenty two percent and so a pretty significant gap. As shown on the screen. So when we're looking at the state overall with pre ACT secure, that's the ninth and tenth grade spring assessment, we can see how we are performing as compared to the state based on the data shown on this slide. So we are outpacing the state. We are ninth and tenth graders performed at forty percent meeting, meeting that benchmark, whereas the entire state overall was at thirty two percent. So well outpacing the state. And then when we specifically look at just tenth grade, the state, we, there's thirty one percent of tenth graders performing as college and career ready on benchmark or above, and we have forty two percent. So in both areas, we are more than five percent ahead of the state in terms of performance on the pre ACT secure. When looking at our reading ACT results and comparing with our comparable districts, we are scoring about a twenty point five on the ACT in the area of reading. And so the, remember, the ACT is only for eleventh graders. We are the, pretty close to the top of the pack in terms of our performance as compared to our districts that are comparable to us. When we look at Dane County, we are performing in the middle on the ACT in the area of reading. When looking at the ACT results over time, we can see again our comparable districts here, the, the trend lines are pretty consistent. One thing to point out is that in twenty fifteen, you notice there's a yellow box around twenty fifteen as well as a pretty significant downward trend that happened that year. That was the year that Wisconsin began requiring all eleventh graders to take the ACT. So prior to that, it was just taken by students who are maybe interested in going to college. And the state moved towards all eleventh graders taking it. And so then once you widened the group include students now who know they're going to college with students who may be going to college with students who might not be interested in college and you include all students. There was that downward trend that happened. And then you can see that there has been a slight decline over time for all of the districts. And the, there's also more variability between the districts, but we are performing again pretty well among our comparable districts here. So pretty near the top compared over time, and we have consistently been performing that way. Again, this slide is the same slide, just isolating Sun Prairie for a little bit easier viewing and the gray bars being the average. So we're performing pretty, pretty well above average among this group. When we look at the ACT results for reading and compare ourselves to our geographic peers here in Dane County, we can see that similar trend line happened where there was pretty consistent before twenty fifteen. And then things sort of widen and there has been a downward trend among this group as well over time. Although there has, there was a slight peak after the pandemic post twenty twenty one. But then overall, all groups are in average are declining. There are districts that are increasing and some that are declining. We are here a little bit towards the bottom in terms of our results at this time. But again, it's a, it's a mixed group, some districts improving, some declining, some remaining relatively flat over recent years. But let's look at national comparisons. We know a lot of students who are going to use this ACT is because they're going to a college that requires it. And so both when we look at our in-state comparisons as well as our national comparisons, we think about, you know, what does those student scores mean in terms of competition for getting accepted to a college or university that they're most interested in? So this table illustrates the percent of students that met benchmarks across the composite areas of the ACT for reading in states that are required to administer the assessment. So there are only eleven states in the United States that require the ACT statewide. Wisconsin being one of them. Utah has the highest percent of students meeting benchmarks as compared to the overall states, which is why those percentages are blue because they're the highest compared to the other ten. Mississippi and Nevada have the lowest percent of students meeting benchmarks as compared to the overall stage, which is why those percentages are red. Because they're the lowest as compared to the other ten states. When thinking about summarizing overall information across eleven states, those three are excluded from the average calculation because they're the outliers. But looking specifically at Sun Prairie, here you can see that across the three years of twenty three, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, not only did we outpace the state by six percent for that three year average, we also were just one percent away from the highest performer, which is Utah. So right on track for being a high performer, a second highest in the nation among this group. When we take out those outliers and we look at the states, the eight states that don't include Nevada, Mississippi and Utah, when we look at the twenty twenty four results, we are well outpacing the average. So we're performing at forty two percent meeting the, the ACT results as compared to those other states at thirty six percent. So on the national level, we're doing quite well. Okay, so now we're going to turn to numeracy. Student resort, result policy two, excuse me, student result, yeah, student result policy two board result expectation one is on numeracy, making reasonable progress each year towards being literate and numerate across academic disciplines is what we are asked for in student result policy two. Having academic achievement growth with a focus on improving academic outcomes for students experiencing significantly lower rates of success. So what is noted on this result expectation, the numeracy assessment or measure for eighth grade is math composite. And we were looking for achievement or growth being met. We met the achievement indicator thus highlighting us green. So looking for sixty percent or more meeting or exceeding the fortieth percentile. And we had sixty one percent of our eighth graders achieving that. And the pre ACT for math, specifically at tenth grade, looking at thirty one percent or more meeting or exceeding the college readiness benchmarks, and we were at thirty four percent. So again, outpacing our goal and meeting that achievement mark. So that's why these were marked as green or meeting our goals. Turning now to middle school math. This data again comes from this school year. So this is when we used Ames Web Plus. And you can see in the fall, the students averaged a performance outcome of sixty two point six percent as an indicator of meeting or exceeding benchmark expectations. Results reported on SR two are aligned specifically to eighth grade. And so you can see the students in eighth grade performed at an average of sixty three point three percent meeting or exceeding benchmark expectations. And so again, here's the data broken down by school as well as grade six, seven and eight. This is also a scorecard measure. When we disaggregate the data and break it down by our racial demographic groups, remembering that sixty two point six percent is the percent of students in general in middle school who are at or above benchmark. We have gaps that exist. We have students performing above that average, particularly our Asian group, our white group. And then students who are performing below or well below that average. And you can see that shown here on the screen. When we disaggregate our eighth grade achievement data, you can see that eighth grade average was sixty three point three percent at or above benchmark and by eighth grade, the similar gaps exist and and even begin to widen. Looking at middle school math over time. So we, here we have two years or six assessment cycles of math. This is a math assessment from Fast Bridge. A math measures broad math abilities, predicts overall math achievement and counting cardinality, operations, algebraic thinking, number operation base ten, fractions, measurement data geometry. And so over time, again, we acknowledge persistent and pervasive gaps exist. Particularly for black students, students with disabilities and multilingual learners. That said, overall, in math at middle school, we are also seeing a continuous and steady growth across the past six assessment windows. In moving from fifty five point four percent meeting or exceeding benchmark to sixty one point two percent, which is a five point eight percent increase. And so you can see there, we are, we are making positive gains in terms of our math outcomes. Looking specifically at eighth grade, which is what's reported on SR two. We have a nearly eleven point, ten point nine percent specifically increase across the same time. So between the fall of twenty two, twenty three and the spring of twenty three, twenty four. Which is great to see. Looking now at the forward. So the forward comparing our district comparisons in math, same group of district comparable districts. Here you can see that we again are middle of the pack, although we are below the average for this group. Sixth grade outcomes for math in twenty twenty four were forty five percent proficient in advance, seventh grade was fifty two point two percent and eighth grade was forty seven point four percent, which totals a hundred and forty four point six, which aligns with the score on the left. Similar trends happening for all districts, right? Looking between twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen, everybody had a little slight increase and then things began to dip. Once the pandemic started, took a very significant hit in twenty twenty one. And then everyone has pretty much been moving back in a positive direction with pretty significant increases when you're looking between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, Sun Prairie included. And here I've isolated for Sun Prairie. So you can see that a little bit more clearly. We've been pretty much on average for achievement over the past couple of years. And so we, in order to remain on average, we will need to accelerate outcomes to remain on pace with our district comparisons across middle school math. When we look at the forward and break it down by advanced proficient below basic, basic and no test for our comparison groups. Here you can see that there's varying levels of proficient and advanced among this group. We are pretty much, you know, middle of the road, meaning that there is middle of the road in terms of proficient, we're preferring better than some, not as well as others. And then for the advanced group, there are, it looks like the group, the districts that are outperforming us have more students in the advanced areas. And so that is the results for eighth grade forward. When we look across Dane County, you can see again that we are and I'd say the bottom third of this group, we are below average. And we are following pretty similar trend lines along with everyone else. Slight decline across time from twenty sixteen until the pandemic, pretty significant decline and then the rebound and students performing actually above pre pandemic time. So if we look at our achievement in twenty twenty four and we look back on how we performed in twenty sixteen, we're doing better now than we were eight years ago. And in this group, we're not accelerating as quickly with our outcomes as some of our, the Dane County peers are. Looking at the forward results among Dane County groups. Again, you can see pretty stark differences in that advanced group. And so this makes us think about what we might need to do differently to continue to move students up across levels. So move them from below basic to basic, move them from basic to proficient, move from proficient to advanced and really start to push students forward with middle school math. We are undergoing curriculum renewal and design with a materials adoption this year and looking to potentially select new materials. We know we just adopted the twenty twenty one Wisconsin State Standards, which is what this assessment assesses. And so looking brightly ahead to the future. the future and some positive outcomes that may continue to happen as we implement new curriculum and have our new math sequence. Taking a turn towards high school math. High school math achievement is assessed using that ACT suite assessment. So again, pre-ACT local grades nine, 10, 11 in the fall, pre-ACT secure grades nine and 10 in the spring, ACT grade 11 in the spring. Here you can see that this data is collected across time and steady improvements, incremental, slow, but incremental in the right direction. So in 2023, 24 fall, we were at 31.5% of students being college and career ready, and 2425 performance indicator, 33.4%. So moving up slightly, 2% increase on the ACT suite here. When we look specifically at 10th grade, which is what we report on SR2, 31.7% of our 10th graders performed commensurate with college benchmarks. And so high school math achievement is showing a slight increase across grades nine, 10, and 11. This could be that fewer students are keeping up with the rigor and advancement of the ACT assessment over time, but it is something that our schools are digging into, this ACT data as well. And you can see the breakdown of performance by school. When we disaggregate the data, 33.4% of students, again, remembering they perform at or above benchmark. So we have pretty disparate, there's not really anyone that's on par with that average or either performing, you know, well above that or well below that. And similar trends in literacy and the gaps among racial demographic groups exist for math as well. And looking at students with disabilities and our multilingual learners, we do see some of the most significant gaps in all of this data that's presented in the area of high school mathematics for students with disabilities and students who are multilingual learners. At 10th grade specifically, we look, here is a slide that shows our breakdown by race in 10th grade, 31.7% was our general overall. And we have a trend here that's pretty much on par with the performance of our white students who are slightly above with a 36.1% meeting those college readiness benchmarks. But our Asian students are well outperforming that, and our Black and African American and Hispanic Latino students pretty significantly underperforming them. Looking at students with disabilities and multilingual learners, significant gaps again. Taking a look at the pre-ACT secure in math across Wisconsin. So looking at the math composite scores for students in ninth and 10th grade combined on that spring assessment, we are three, within 3% of being on average with the state. So we are below average by 3%. When we look specifically at 10th grade, however, we are outpacing the state. So while the state overall dips between the combined ninth and 10th grade to the 10th grade, we are increasing on combined in the 10th grade to our 10th grade. And so 3% above by the time our students move to 10th grade. Which again, when students are looking at the competition for college universities across the state of Wisconsin, this would be certainly a consideration because many of the students in Wisconsin do go to state schools. Taking a look now at the ACT as compared to other districts similar to ours, there's a pretty similar trend happening for the districts. We have the same ACT test results. So we're scoring the same as Stevens Point, Oshkosh, Fond du Lac, and then have a group of our peer districts performing better than us and a group of our peer districts performing poorer than us. So we're right in the middle of the pack among our comparison districts. When we look at Dane County, we are in the bottom half of the district comparison groups here in how we perform comparatively in math, ACT 11th grade. Taking a look then at how we're performing over time, these are our comparison districts over time. Again, note in 2015, right, you see that decline when we move from just some students who are perhaps going to college, taking that assessment to all students in the state, whether or not they were going to a university or college or had other post-secondary plans, all students taking that assessment in 2015. What you can see on these trend lines is there was pretty flat performance up until 2015. And then after 2015, it's sort of been a slow and steady decline for these district groups across time. And that is a trend that we see here in some prairie as well. You can see that we're still performing above average among this group, slightly above average is indicated by us above that gray line. But it is a trend that needs attention and disruption. When we look at our Dane County comparison districts over time, similar trend as the other comparable districts, right, pretty flat until 2015, kind of took took a dive there. And then there's been a slow and steady decline among the Dane County districts as well. In post-pandemic, and actually in the past year, a slight uptick amongst this group. However, we are pretty much toward the bottom of this comparable group. But it's interesting in looking at this data as well, particularly in the past year or two. Some districts are increasing, some districts are decreasing, some districts are remaining relatively flat, and we are a district remaining relatively flat. So let's turn towards national then. When we look at our national comparisons for the ACT, how are we doing against this peer group? Again, just like literacy, these are the 11 districts that require the ACT for all 11th graders. Similar to literacy, Utah is an outlier as the highest performing district among this group. And over the three-year average of the 21, 22, and 23 school years, Mississippi and Nevada are the lowest scoring group for those three-year averages with both of them achieving 17%. So when we look at ourselves, our three-year average, we are exactly on par with Utah. So outpacing the state average by 1% and at the same level as the highest performing district. So we are, excuse me, the highest performing state. So we are, some prairie is performing on par with the highest performers in the nation when it comes to the ACT in terms of the states that require all students to take it. And when we look at 2024, last spring specifically, we remove those outliers and look at the eight districts that are more in the middle of the pack, we are also outpacing that group. So nationally, for the ACT preparation for college and career readiness, we are performing quite well. A bar member asked about, what does intervention look like? How does that work in our secondary schools? Well, intervention sits within our equitable multi-level system of support. You've heard us refer to that as EMLSS, which is depicted on this slide, can be applied to both academics and behavior. We'll talk about behavior a little bit more deeply later on in this presentation during the behavior data section of this report. Looking at the way it works to answer the question, we have core instruction, which is universal instruction that is provided to all students. We have supplemental instruction, which can be additional instruction that's applied to all students if all students are demonstrating a need. It can be additional instruction that's forwarding to some students if, in general, most students are performing well on an assessment, but there are a few who need additional support, right? That might be some additional small groups, supplemental instruction. And then we have intensive supports. So intensive supports are usually a low teacher to student ratio, or maybe in a different learning space, or there's some sort of intensifier that is making it more teacher time, more focused instruction, more direct skills teaching. And so in our middle schools, core instruction is where we're leaning into how are we implementing the experiences in our instructional framework. Focusing now on the knowledge of students, what do we know about our students? That means looking at their data, looking at their performance, and knowing them as people. Learning about standards and getting really deep and clear on what are the essential standards that all students must know and be able to demonstrate knowledge on, and then collaboratively designing challenging instruction, having PLCs. All of our middle schools have PLCs where our teams are planning together, both academic planning meetings, they also have behavioral planning meetings, and using the same universal curricular resource across all of our middle schools. So that's what core instruction looks like. Supplemental instruction in middle school is really a supplemental core. So we have reteaching or pre-teaching that happens. It might happen with a group of students who might just be demonstrating that they need that additional support. We have curricular resource programs. So we have things in literacy such as Success Maker, which is an online adaptive program that provides additional support, but all students use that program. We also have in math, AVMR, which is a math supplemental instruction that we use in sixth and seventh grade. We have IXL. So outside of our core literacy and math programs, we have some additional supplemental curricular resource programming that is adaptive or targeted to a skill. A lot of this happens either as a part of the time during a core instruction, if it's supplemental, it might also, these might also, this type of learning might also occur during win time. So that what I need time, which is a block of time that our middle schoolers have to go deeper with pre-teaching, reteaching, using some of these curricular resources, and potentially having small group instruction as well. Intensive instruction in middle school, we do have intervention classes that are learner strategists, have a classroom in the school, and then students go to that classroom as a class period for literacy, for math, and then are some of our multilingual learners, particularly our students who are newly joining the United States or are new to the English language, might have that instruction. Again, it's intensive because it's a small group size, might be happening in a different learning space. We have specialized instruction that is intensive instruction that happens for some students with disabilities, depending on their IEP. And then we have individualized behavior plans that some students have that has instruction with behavior. So that's what it looks like in middle school. In high school, core instruction looks the same, although we have different class period lengths at high school than we do at middle school. And the daily schedule looks a little bit different, but we still lean into knowing our students, knowing the standards. And even in high school, we organize our staff into PLCs. They meet as course alikes. So even within a department, for example, within the math department, geometry is a course alike. So the geometry teachers would be planning together. And then our Algebra II teachers would be planning together, right? So we're looking at really what are students, what do we want students to know and be able to do? How do we know if they've learned it? What do we do if they haven't? And what do we do if they already have? And so that's part of what that planning looks like for core instruction. The supplemental core instruction, so what's in addition to that? Same, we have reteaching and pre-teaching. We have what I need time, win time also in high school. That happens Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday during their SP 30 time, and then also small group instruction. Intensive supports, intensive instruction at our high school level might be our outreach class. So we have outreach at some prairie east and some prairie west, specifically looking at supporting students who are credit deficient and addressing skill gaps or knowledge gaps that would help them accelerate earning credit. We have specialized instruction that happens, classes that are for special education or for English as a second language, which is a class targeted to students who need that because either their IEP, their Individualized Education Plan for Special Ed, or their recent newcomer also at the high school level might need some specialized instruction. We have a behavior plans that we have in place at our high school levels. We also have alternative schooling options. So in October, it presented on the alternative schooling options that exist in our high schools. And so there are both in district and out of district opportunities that are more intensive and are just a different way of getting students to be college and career ready and to graduation on time. So that's what intervention looks like in secondary. Okay, turning ahead now to SR2 Board Result Expectation 2, which is that students will gain the necessary academic noncognitive skills to be prepared for college, career, and life readiness. So we in this area have three indicators. We had academic readiness, percent participation in college career, college readiness, or workplace learning. It is a baseline here. And so we are just establishing baseline, and which is why that is not color-coded beyond gray. The, we were, what is our baseline for the number of students who are participating in our classes, getting a B minus or better, 39%? We are also looking at students who are passing SP 30. So SP 30 has academic and career planning. So on Monday and Friday is when that advisory period happens, where academic and career planning happens and a variety of other social emotional learning activities and preparation for the life of a high schooler, really. And we're looking at having 80% of more students achieving B minus or better and passing that class. It's a pass fail class, but that's the indicator. And so 94% is well beyond that 80% metric. So we met that goal, which is why it's highlighted green. And then attendance, students are described as having 80% or more students with 90% or higher attendance rate, very close to meeting that metric. We are at 79%. So within five, we are coded yellow. And we'll look at each of these indicators in a bit more detail. Beginning with college readiness and workplace learning, here you can see that we have this information that is taken from the DPI State Report Card in terms of students who are participating in our advanced courses, our dual enrollment, our industry-recognized credentials, and our work-based learning. So for some of these metrics, we're reporting in SR2. You can see that for our advanced courses, we are well outpacing the state. We are pretty commensurate with dual enrollment, just a tinge underneath the state average. We are slightly outpacing the state for industry-recognized credentials and well outpacing the state in terms of work-based learning opportunities. And so this was all data that was shared on the district report card, the 2023, 24 some prairie district report card. And showing it by school, and we're looking at the number of students who are enrolled in these types of opportunities. So the number of students in AP courses or advanced courses, the number of students who earned some type of dual credit, the number of students who earned an industry-recognized credential, the number of students who participated in work-based learning, and the number of students participating in early college credit program and Start College Now. We can see here that there are slightly higher numbers of students participating in some areas than others, meaning that there's not one high school, when we can look at East and West compared, that is significantly engaging more students in all areas. But in general, it does look like West has more students taking advantage of more of these opportunities, which is something to be aware of and look to address. Here you can see some disaggregated data. So this is some prairie east high school's disaggregated data. And what this is showing are those same indicators, advanced coursework, dual enrollment, industry-recognized credentials, and workplace learning, but broken down by racial demographics, economically disadvantaged, English learners and multilingual learners, and students with disabilities. And what this data shows is that students at some prairie east, when we disaggregate for these groups, have pretty consistent outpacing the state when we look at the percentages of students that we're serving. And so you can potentially pause the slide here and take a look at the different demographic groups. But you know, some highlights to celebrate is while our Black students are performing pretty significantly different in literacy and math, we are, our Black students at East are outpacing the state in terms of who's enrolling in completing advanced coursework, who's engaging in dual enrollment, who is earning an industry-recognized credential, our work-based opportunity, work-based learning, five times the state average, right? So looking at our English learners, same. Across almost all of these different indicators, well outpacing the state. Students with disabilities, sort of depends on the trends, the positive highlights, our work-based learning and our dual enrollment is higher, and then lower in advanced coursework and industry-recognized credentials. But some, some good things to celebrate here. Looking at West then, some for West High School, when you disaggregate by these groups, similar trend as East, pretty significant levels of outpacing the state in nearly every demographic group and an indicator. When we narrow in on When we narrow in on our black students. Outpacing the state averages in advanced coursework, dual enrollment. Pretty on par in industry recognized credentials and significantly outpacing the state in terms of work based learning. Looking at our English learners. Outpacing the state, well outpacing the state in all metrics. Students with disabilities. Underperforming in advanced coursework and dual enrollment. Outpacing in industry recognized credentials and work based learning, well outpacing, so. Again, some, some strong celebrations when we look at these types of opportunities for high school students. Looking at SP thirty passing rate by school and by demographic. Some Prairie Phoenix Academy does not have SP thirty, it is one of the instructional blocks, they have an advisory where they teach their academic and career planning. But it's not organized in the same way, so for the sake of this presentation, we're looking at some Prairie East and some Prairie West. We're looking to see ninety-five percent of students passing anything in our schools. And so if you are at ninety-five percent, you would be green. If you are within five and approaching that, you would be yellow, and if it, the group is beyond five percent lower than that. Then it is red. Middle school does not grade SP thirty. And so that is why we are just showing the SP thirty passing rates of these demographic groups at East and West. Trends remain pretty commensurate with some of the academic performance data we saw. As well, this is something we report on SR two. And then taking a turn towards attendance, which we also report on SR two, you can see overall. We had eighty point eight percent of students remembering that we're looking to have eighty percent of students having ninety percent or higher attendance. Okay, and so we are on target, slightly above for that metric. However, it is notable when you break it down by school that PPA is significantly off track for attendance. This year at PPA, every educator has attendance as part of their student learning outcome goal in their performance evaluation. In addition to an academic goal that they each have set, and that is part of their work to disrupt their attendance. Performance, and you can see it's, it's pretty significantly disparate. Other than that. All schools except West High School are performing at or above that eighty percent mark, some Prairie West also has. Attendance as their main focal area. In their, one of their problems of practice, but also in their hundred day planning cycles. If we break it down by racial demographic group. Again, we had eighty point eight percent being the attendance overall. When we're looking at middle school and high school data broken down by race. Here you can see the performance indicators where we have. Black students at middle school. Slightly below, about four percent below, and other groups commensurate or above. At high school, you can see that all attendance declines. So by high school, only Asian and white students are meeting that eighty percent expectation. And we're at eighty-two percent for Asian students and eighty-three percent for white students. And the other demographic groups, black, Hispanic, Latino, two more races. Are taking a pretty significant dip, and so that's something to be actively working toward for our high schools as well. Looking at multilingual learners. Same trend appears in general that are. Where we have, meeting all of the benchmarks for multilingual learners in middle school, but by the time students move into high school. They stay strong with their freshman year and then each year take a pretty significant decline in attendance. As our students matriculate through the grades. However, there is a note of caution with multilingual learners is that. Each year, students have to re-qualify to be a multilingual learner, and one of our goals is to have students. Qualify out or become English proficient, and so these demographic groups do change quite a bit over time. And the group of multilingual learners are not static, so that's something important to know as well. Looking at our students with disabilities. As compared to that eighty point eight percent at or above expectation rate we see for overall students. All of our students with disabilities are performing below. That expectation. So we see a similar trend in declining attendance from middle school on through high school. And we do not have any of these grade levels who are meeting that expectation. And so that is certainly something to draw attention to and to focus on for the future as well. Okay, SR two board ex, result expectation number three. So here we're looking at the ability to demonstrate mastery of content knowledge, skills and competencies through multiple opportunities and assessment. So we have high school grade proficiency department data. And then high school credit attainment. And graduation rate. So when we're thinking about students who are. Having proficiency, we're considering proficiency to align with college and career readiness standards, which is eighty percent or more of students. Having a B minus or better. On their coursework. So we performed at seventy-six percent of students having a B minus or better on their coursework. And so that means that we are within five, but slightly below that goal, so that is marked yellow in terms of needing some attention. When we're looking at credit attainment, so we want ninety-five percent or more of our students to pass their classes. So ninety-five percent or more students getting a D minus or better, that's just straight credit attainment. Ninety percent of our students are doing that. And so we met that goal, and we're looking at credit attainment in English, language arts, math, science and social studies. And then also graduation rate. Graduation rate, as we'll see in a moment, is above ninety-five percent. So we have marked this as meeting expectation, although notably this metric is missing from the progress descriptors key. And need some attention for next year's outcome calculations. But when we break this down a little bit and look at our high schools, some for East and some for West. Who are doing grading by department. You can see that we're trying, we're, our goal is to have students have eighty percent or more. Getting a B minus or better in their classes. Right, our current bell curve of college and career readiness hovers around sixty-six percent, we need to shift that. Curve upwards towards eighty percent in order to have more students college and career ready according to research. So while we have a lot of students passing. We don't have as many earning B minus or better, so the gap would be students who are C plus to D minus. Right, and so we need to shift that again to have our work, having students having higher levels of achievement, and that's our goal. Graduation rate by school, as I said, our goal is to have this above ninety-five percent. And so ninety-eight point three percent both for East High School and West High School. And then notably Prairie Phoenix Academy and the other alternative programs. Those students graduate with an east or a west high school diploma, and so their data is included. In that graduation rate data for East and West High School. Or result expectation, one of SR three. Is to gain the necessary social, emotional and life skills to be successful in our school community and beyond. So we have four indicators here. This board expectation demonstrates success in our system, as you saw in the SR three. Presentation earlier this year. Expecting students to have necessary social, emotional and life skills to be successful in our schools. The first two measures are categories within and directly related, related to our work in social emotional learning, so emotional development and social competence. We're making reasonable progress in these areas based on the student responses to our SEL competency survey that we give in the fall, winter and spring. The next two measures, behavior referrals and exclusionary practices are related to disciplinary practices. We're making reasonable progress in those areas as well, based on the percent of students receiving these types of disciplinary practices. So our SEL data, we want to have eighty percent or more of students. Having a three or four on the two questions that they answer in the emotional domain. We had eighty-eight students, so meeting that goal. In the social domain. We want eighty percent or more students to report favorably either three or four. On the assessment and they answer four questions related to that. And we had ninety-two percent, so also well surpassing that goal. For behavior, we. Want students to have eighty percent, eighty percent or more of our students to have zero to one major or minor incident referrals. Right, so ninety-two percent of our students had zero to one major or minor incident referrals. That means only eight percent of our students had. An incident referral. So we met that metric. Our out of school suspensions, ninety-five percent or more of our students. Having no out of school suspension, we had ninety-five percent of our students without any out of school suspension. So again, we met that goal. So when we break it down a little bit further, and we look at things by school and across time. So this is the first indicator of emotional development. So in emotional development, we're looking at two things, understanding and managing one's emotion. And so that's on self-management, which in. Middle school means students are able to express their emotions in appropriate and respectful manner. In high school, looking at being able to express their emotions in appropriate respectful manner. But in different environments with different audience and using different modalities, verbal and non-verbal. And then as they move into eleventh grade and towards adults, thinking about how they express their emotions and, and how what you do and say influences those around you. That's emotional development in terms of self-management. The second question is around focus and attention and ability to organize. And so at middle school, we, we're teaching our students to independently use organizational skills and strategies to focus their attention. At high school, we're teaching our students to independently use organizational skills and strategies to focus their attention. And work towards long-term goals, and then by the time they get to eleventh, twelfth and beyond. Employing those skills independently and understanding their importance and achieving goals in times of adversity. And so what we can see in the emotional development domain is that. This, the indicators here move through time, so in the first column by each school is the most currently reported. Data in the fall of this school year. Then we move to the fall of last school year, twenty twenty-three, then we move to the fall of the previous school year. And what we see here is a slight backslide in the data. Which is something curious for us to dig into more and pay more attention to is what might be happening with our students in terms of their ability to self-regulate. Or their ability to focus and organize. And so, again, this, this is information that our schools use, and it's part of. What they use both for their hundred day plan, as well as the data that's viewed when they make their problems of practice, but emotional development is an area that. Has me asking some questions about what might be going on in our schools. The second indicator, that social competence indicator, remember we ask four questions. These four questions relate to understanding people's differences. Developing and maintaining relationships, solving conflict and contributing to the community. So. We ask questions around social awareness and questions around relationship skills. In middle school, we want our learners to be able to identify discrimination of individuals based on perceived differences. And in high school, we want our students to be able to assess for their own personal bias and evaluate strategies to avoid stereotyping others. And as students move towards eleventh grade and beyond, being able to develop ethical arguments from a variety of ethical positions to evaluate societal norms. So that's social awareness. In terms of relationship skills, we want our middle schoolers to be able to recognize the emotional, physical, social and other costs of negative relationships. Beginning high schoolers. We want our learners to be able to independently seek and sustain positive supportive relationships, and as they move into eleventh grade, twelfth grade and beyond. To be able to maintain positive relationships and use strategies such as boundary setting, stating their needs. Recognizing war and signs in order to avoid negative relationships. Again, taking a slight backslide in terms of social competency. We still have our middle schools performing quite well, but as our students turn towards high school, we're also seeing some. Inconsistent data and some declining data in the area of social competencies, so something also to pay attention to. In looking at our middle school behavior, which is both an SR three measure as well as a scorecard measure. Looking at the percent of students who have zero to one incident referrals, major incident referrals. This data was taken. From November of twenty twenty-four, and when we break it down by race. We can see that there are gaps that exist particularly for our black students when it comes to. Students who have zero to one majors, whereas overall ninety-two point nine percent of students. Have zero to one referrals, major referrals. Only seventy-two point nine percent, so a twenty percent difference in those behavior referrals. In breaking it down by school, you can, we see some improvements in all of our middle schools. Moving from the low eighties in terms of students who had exclusionary practice. Up to the nineties. In terms of students who have not had an exclusionary practice as of November of this year, so September, October, November. So when we compare across time, the work that our middle schools are doing. Teaching about social emotional learning with our restorative practices is trending in the right direction. When we look at our high schools. We can also see a similar story, we have ninety-seven point nine percent. Of high schoolers having zero to one major behaviors, I mean, that's ninety-eight percent, that means only two percent of our high school body. Is having zero, is having a major officer referral. And. The gaps exist, but they're not nearly as extensive as they are in middle school, our largest gap being with our black students at ninety-two percent. And when we look across time. Significant increases in the percent of students without having exclusionary practices. From spring of twenty-four to November of twenty-four. Looking at out of school suspension frequency by school, which is on our school scorecards. You can see that across the past two years' data, we have. Some difference among what's the story happening in our schools with regard to out of school suspension. Central Heights has dramatically increased in terms of their out of school suspension. While Patrick Marsh has remained pretty. Flat decreased slightly, but has had pretty low suspension numbers overall. And Prairie View having a significant decrease in suspension, cutting their suspensions nearly in half. In the same timeframe from last year. Counter to that, we see some Prairie East having a significant uptick in those out of school suspension. Sixfold, so a pretty significant increase in out of school suspension, some Prairie West also having a slight increase in out of school suspension. As well as PPA, so we, there are some celebrations in terms of. Reducing out of school suspension as we know that students can't learn when they're not in school. And we know that we need our schools to be safe places. And safe spaces where students can learn and, and staff can teach, and so this is a, a tension and a balance that our schools are. Paying attention to and looking at this data and intervening appropriately. When we disaggregate this across all of our secondary schools together by race. We look at what percentage of students. Of the two hundred and eight suspensions that have happened between September and November when this data was collected. Fifty-five percent of those suspensions are happening with our black students. Seventy-three percent of those suspensions are happening with our economically disadvantaged. And so here. Again, tells a story of. When students aren't in school, they're not learning. And there is a, suggests a correlation between. If you're not in school, you're not learning, what does your academic performance look like over time when we think back to those math and literacy achievement outcome? Metrics and results that we saw earlier in this presentation. In looking at restorative practices, this comes from our data playbook. We had. A board member who was interested in restorative practices and knowing. What are restorative practices, what does this look like in our school, and what's the role of our restorative practices coach? And so this is representative data from all of our schools and demographic groups combining. All major and restorative practice documentation for any and all use of restorative. Types of a response, so when a behavioral referral happens. And a restorative practice is a response, or instead of a behavioral referral, we're having a restorative practice take place. All of that is captured here. So this is our baseline data, which includes first year of local data collection around restorative practices. Again, which is not necessarily associated with behavioral error. So in order to color code this and be able to interpret the data, we might expect about twenty percent of the students to benefit from this additional layer of support. Therefore, under the all column. The color coding is related to comparing to that likely percentage. Blue represents implementation beyond what we might expect. Yellow, or in this case, red, being implemented is below what we would expect for that population. Yellow, or in this case, red, being implemented is below what we would expect for that population. So the subsequent columns as disaggregated is compared to the all category. So if you are within five, then it would be coded green. If you're more than five but less than ten, it would be coded yellow and more coded red. So who is represented in the students that have benefited or not from restorative practices data? Would be the students in blue benefiting the most. So we see our black students, our students with disabilities and our students who have low socioeconomic status. In general, benefiting the most from restorative practices, which is a positive trend in our middle schools. When we look at our high schools, because our all student population is in red, when we see the yellow and the green. All of those are positives. And again, green column of our black students, some of our students with disabilities and our low socioeconomic students. Those are the groups of students who are benefiting the most from restorative practices as compared to the general population. So to explain restorative practices in our secondary schools, we have restorative practices as a term. And we have restorative justice in education, both as a term and a strategic partner that we're using as there are many different models of what restorative practices and or restorative justice in schooling can look like. We follow the model of restorative justice education, which is a group we have partnered with for a few years now. This includes proactive strategies, responsive supports, and then day-to-day work in the role of the restorative practices coach. Why did we venture into restorative practices in the first place? We have to know that restorative justice is a holistic approach to school culture, not just a discipline system. Right? Current behavior and discipline data in our district indicates that our black and brown students are experiencing referrals and exclusionary discipline at a disproportionate rate and have done so over time. We are committed to disrupting inequities. We are committed to disrupting the school to prison pipeline here in some prairie. We're also committed to social emotional wellness for all students, which means we have universal social emotional learning instruction and strategies. Which focuses on the whole child. We are engaged in a system-wide across all of our secondary schools, learning and implementation around restorative practices. We're teaching about restorative circles, partnering with restorative justice in education. Using alternatives to discipline so that we have more equitable outcomes for our black and brown students. We know it's important to engage in processes that restore harm when a previously established connection between two or more individuals has been broken. We believe that by implementing and engaging in restorative practices within our system, we are going to see a culture shift over time. And a multi-year system-wide implementation plan is necessary to achieve lasting desired outcomes, which we do have for the entire some prairie area school district. We do follow a tiered model for restorative practices, similar to the intervention model that you saw several slides ago. That core tier one with all of our secondary students engage in community building. This is in order to have students be able to relate to one another and to be able to prevent behavioral error from happening, conflict from happening, harm from happening. And so that's that community building piece that we engage with in our schools. We follow developmental designs. We use restorative circles. Community building circles and so forth. Some of our students, statistics would say about fifteen percent in general, would need to have restorative practices to intervene on that community that's been created. So there might be a harm that has been caused. There might be conflict that is ongoing that needs resolution. And so there might be those supplemental small group instruction with perhaps an adult, an educator, restorative practice coach, to be able to provide more teaching to intervene on whatever has happened that has happened negatively among students and then repair that. Then there is also a smaller group of students who likely have had such a such a harmful behavior happen that the student has potentially been excluded from school. So detention, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension. And we use restorative practices to support re-entry, the circle process. Restorative conversations to have the student reintegrate into the community and those are likely individualized with the student and or family and a staff member or two at the school. So how do we practice restorative justice in education? Okay, it says the restorative justice in education can be thought of slightly differently than restorative justice in the incarceration system. Here we think about restore, respect, dignity and mutual concern. And so we at our core know that all people are worthy and that humans are relational. We think about then nurturing those healthy relationships, creating just and equitable learning environments and repairing harm and transforming conflict. And so when we're thinking about nurturing healthy relationships, what that looks like is we have student and adult social emotional learning. We use community building circles. We have circles of power and respect and we have restorative conversations. That's all to help advance healthy relationships in our schools. We also think about how we are creating just and equitable learning environments. Developmental designs is a social emotional learning curriculum that we use. It's a way of being. So that we are co-constructing the rules of the classroom, co-developing classroom contracts in ways of being in in our school environments across all areas of the school. And focusing on having student voice and student agency be a part of the learning experience. We also are working to have culturally responsive curriculum. Using curriculum renewal and design process and using equity tools and resources that we have to evaluate. Refine, sometimes rewrite curriculum when it needs to better match the demographic of our students that we have in our schools so that we are not creating curriculum violence with our instruction. The third area is repairing harm and transforming conflict. And so that looks like restorative conversations. We have peer-led restorative circles with student circle keepers. We use entry or re-entry conferences if there has been some type of exclusionary discipline. And then many of our schools have a form of a conflict resolution room, so kind of use different types of names for them. The zone at Prairie View or the alternate learning environment or just different types of names that they have. But it's essentially a room that is focused on restorative practices and conflict resolution. How do we create a restorative culture? Begins with that, creating that sense of belonging. We know that you need to have strong teacher-to-teacher relationships, strong teacher-to-student relationships and strong student-to-student relationships. Again, the community building is key because we know that when something happens. We have to have a strong community foundation to restore back to, which is why we have restorative practices happening in general. And not just restorative justice. Okay, so when when something happens, the adult or the student, whoever is leading the conflict resolution will ask, what happened? What's the problem? Who's been impacted or harmed? What do they need? Sometimes it's a student, sometimes it's a community. What needs to happen to make things right? And how do we make sure this doesn't happen again? And then we make some agreements. And do that through those restorative conversations or restorative circles. You can see this continuum of restorative practices and the teal indicators are what's preventative. What are we doing to prevent conflict, to prevent harm, to build and maintain relationships? We work on identity. We are thinking about those classroom practices. Those are those trauma-informed practices, our developmental design strategies, the routines and procedures that our schools put in place in order to be day one ready, day one readiness indicators. Working on community building and then the curriculum that we use to teach. And if harm does happen. Then these darker indicated bars show, how do we respond? How do we repair those relationships? How to resolve conflict? How do we manage difficulties and disruptions to get back to a healthy community? We use I-statements, we have relational conversations, sometimes we have scripted questions, we have peer mediators, particularly for minor incidents. There might be a whole class problem solving, there might be a student restorative group, there might be a student peer council that helps. And then if we do get into serious incidents, that could becomes more formal. Where the restorative practices coach would do pre-conferencing with any of the individuals involved. Determining if students are ready to come together and then processing through a pretty scripted process of that healing circle or conference. So this is a pretty common approach to what restorative practices in education look like. When we were talking about intervention earlier, one of the things I said is we're going to come back to behavior. So here's an example from a school on the intervention steps that occur prior to a referral in our efforts to reduce exclusionary discipline. So this is a screenshot, so these links aren't live. This is from a school here in some prairie, comes from Central Heights. And this is what's taught to staff. That the very first step on the left-hand side is for all educators to use empowering language. To have effective statements, to be a warm demanders, to be asking, how can I help? Do you need someone to talk with? Addressing and interrupting that behavior by the educator there on in the moment. Sometimes students need reminding and reteaching, still done by the educator. Stating the expectation, teaching or modeling the positive behavior, giving a replacement behavior. You know, contacting the parent at this point, perhaps if something has repeated, contacting a case manager. So there's there, if they have an IEP, if they're a multilingual learner, if they have a five oh four, there's a script in here that's linked for our teachers to use. So anything in green is really what our classroom educators are doing to support students with how do we behave in our secondary schools? If that behavior continues, then you can see that things sort of escalate. And at this point, help may be needed. So the staff may call for assistance, the staff member may request a restorative conversation later on. There is a reflection form that would be filled out for students that are staff to process an event that might have happened. And then that form gets turned into the restorative practices coach. And then there is an additional way to request support. So there's a way to ask for additional assistance. And again, a sample script that's provided to educators if the educator wants to do this level of intervention themselves. If things repeat or for some offenses and as outlined by our behavior matrix. Require immediate assistance, okay, things like violence, alcohol, tobacco and other drugs. Certain other indicators that are again outlined in our behavior matrix. In red, you see, you need to submit, educator need to submit a referral and call for help. Requires the administrator or the restorative practices coach as a consultant. And then this is when we have something documented in NIP and campus. So we're putting in what was the behavior? Where did it happen? When did it happen? What happened using student A and student B, not using student names for confidentiality. Entering in who else was involved and then contacting the caregiver. And notifying the case manager if one exists. And then there's a link here. So this is sort of the the steps before the referral, the referrals on the right, right? But we don't want our educators to go straight to that. We want our educators to be empowered. To be able to have students engage meaningfully and repair the the ongoing issues that arise on the spot. And are always encouraged to seek help or consultancy from administrators, restorative practices staff, colleagues, mentors, their teammates and so forth. In our middle schools, one board member specifically asked about behavior in our middle schools. Our middle schools organize their PLCs by content and by house. So their house are the teachers who teach all of the same students. So if if one teacher teaches literacy and one teacher teaches math and one teacher teaches science and social studies. That's considered a house. And there might be three houses at a grade level at a school, for example. In those house behavior meetings, which happen once a week, the educators come together and use this four-question process to discuss what are the interventions that are happening? They might be site-based, they might be done by a student service member, they might be a student that they're noticing based on data, might be in need of an intervention. They're looking at data in either educolyma or next path, we're kind of transitioning platforms here. And looking at comparisons between other houses or comparisons across time. They might have individual students that need collaborative problem solving, so having a brief one to two-minute conversation about individual students that might need just some peer guidance and suggestions on on what to do with something that might be challenging in terms of what skills might need to be taught or re-taught. And so these are the the house behavioral meetings that are happening weekly in our schools. Our restorative practices coach is an individual who leads the restorative practices work. So we have a one point O FTE of a restorative practice coach in each middle school, as well as one at some Prairie East and some Prairie West. And then due to the size of the school, the school social worker at PPA is also the restorative practices coach. This role was repurposed from FTE. We used to have the outreach program in our middle schools and during the reconfiguration. Realized that we would much rather be proactive than reactive and so transitioned that FTE away from outreach and into restorative practice coach. We have different timelines of implementation as part of our comprehensive district-wide plan. So middle school started this in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the first year post-reconfiguration. And then at high school, we also repurposed unused FTE from the outreach program. And the high schools began last year. So we really are in year three of implementation at middle school. And year two of implementation at high school, pretty recent implementation, but already seeing some meaningful impact. The main roles of a restorative practices coach is to facilitate restorative practices, both the proactive, proactive as well as the responsive pieces to restoration that happened within the school community and to coach and consult with staff in in the staff for started practices. So then looking at SR three, board result expectation number two. Being future-focused and skilled in long-range goal-setting for their education, college careers and life. The assessment and measures we're looking at here are the percent participation in college readiness and workplace learning. The percent of high school students successfully passing SP thirty and then self-concept. And so it was a baseline year for students who are engaged in college readiness, workplace learning and earning a B minus or better. Again, we've reported on this one earlier as well. The successfully passing SP thirty, exceeding that expectation. And so meeting that goal as well. And then self-concept. So self-concept is an area that we're specifically thinking for goal-setting. And we want students to have eighty percent of our student body reporting goal-setting behavior at a three or four on the indicator that we use for self-concept. And we had eighty-four percent report at a three or four on that Likert scale. And so we met this goal as well. And we're meeting reasonable progress. When we're looking at SR three, board result expectation number three, students participating in activities and experiences in and out of the classroom that prepare them to engage and thrive in a diverse community. We have five measures, sense of belonging, high school grades proficiency by department, which we saw earlier. High school credit attainment, which we saw earlier, extracurricular involvement, which was a baseline year for results calculation and then participation in community school-sponsored out-of-school time activities. And sense of belonging, we want students eighty percent or more to report a three or four on the Likert rating for sense of belonging. We had eighty-seven percent, we met our goal. For students for the non-core grades, so we're looking at all of the other courses this time around other than ELA, math, science and social studies. So we want students to still be achieving eighty percent, having a B minus or better on all of those other courses. We were very close, seventy-nine percent, one percentage point away. We were within five, so we were noted as having some exceptions noted here, but very close. For non-core credit attainment, again, the same indicator as before, but this time it's all of the other courses. So the last metric we looked at for high school credit attainment was ELA, math, science, social studies. These are all of the other courses in the school other than those four content areas. We want ninety-five percent or more of students to achieve a D minus or better or pass the class. We had ninety-six percent passing those classes. And so we met our goal. We are gathering baseline data on the amount of students who are in clubs, activities and athletics in secondary schools. So this year we noted fifty-nine percent, the first year we're collecting the data. Which was a non-rating then. And then participation in community schools, another baseline year. We had fifteen percent of students participating in community school-sponsored out-of-time activities. And did note that we made our goal in that area as well. So breaking it down then by student belonging in our schools, so the students who are reporting that they all often or almost always, so that three or four have a high sense of belonging on the left side is the spring of twenty twenty-three. And then on the right side is the spring of twenty twenty-four. And so this chart you can see advancing across time and making gains in sense of belonging. And so when we look at nearly all schools with the exception of PPA. With the exception of PPA, all schools are making With the exception of PPA, all schools are making gains. In terms of students having a higher sense of belonging, there is pretty significant fluctuation with PPA. Um, because of the low frequency of students who are taking this assessment, which is something that we are actively looking to positively impact. When we look at sense of belonging disaggregated, so um I belong, feel I belong in our schools. We can see some different groups um drawing attention to a couple of. Metrics that are pretty far away from expectation, we have um students with disabilities at Patrick Marsh and our multilingual learners at Prairie View. Couple of groups to pay attention to, um, but pretty strong sense of belonging. In most all of these demographic groups at our schools. Looking at extracurricular involvement by school, so we do quarterly grading in middle school and semestral grading at high school. So looking at either the first quarter of middle school or the first semester of high school of last year, we can see the different. Um, levels of extracurricular involvement and given that this was a non-rating year, we did not apply the color coding. Um, to this graph, but you can see in general, the amount of students per school that are engaging in. Our extra or co-curricular offerings, so clubs, activities. And things that are happening um outside of school times that are not part of the community schools program. Um, pretty significant, are pretty consistent engagement and we do see increased engagement. Um, particularly for our um Hispanic students as they kind of grow up through the years. Um, as well as for some of our multilingual learner students. Um, and some of our students with disabilities, particularly at some Prairie East, so there's something at some Prairie East for us to dig into a little bit there. In terms of their higher levels of um extracurricular involvement. Looking at community schools, um, here we can see participation in community schools, part of our SR three. Um, by school and by demographic in terms of who is participating. Pretty consistent across our middle schools and remembering that our community schools programming. Began pretty recently at Central Heights and Prairie View and has been in place longer at Patrick Marsh and Prairie Phoenix Academy. Um, in general, overall, pretty low rates of participation. Um, and this is something uh for us to be thinking about, what does it mean to have? Our students engage in community schools activities that aren't a part of those extracurriculars or co-curriculars and how our students are balancing their time? And what opportunities are we offering? And what are the ways in which we're engaging and measuring engagement is something that um we have had presentations on. At the board level in the past and something that we continue to pay attention to um in terms of not only overall. Involvement, but again, these these breakdowns of demographic groups. Um, it is interesting to note Central Heights here has pretty strong engagement across all. Of these groups and and higher for some of the demographic groups consistently, but again, pretty consistent. In terms of when you're breaking down the individual demographics, not a whole lot of outliers in terms of who's participating. So to culminate what's going well, there's a lot of information presented here as. Results are pretty extensive and comprehensive, and so in general, what's going well? Our some prairie school district report cards at the state level, at secondary. Have all improved, all ratings have improved when you're looking at the score, while the category may not improve. The score is improving, which shows we are on a positive trend, that positive trend was showcased in our middle school math and reading assessment outcomes. Which have consistently improved across the past six progress monitoring windows over the past two years. Our eighth grade forward data for ELA and math is steadily improving. Our ACT data is showing strong achievement when you compare to our national normed peers. Um, we are at the top of the game when compared with the eleven states who also require ACT nationwide. Our outcomes for ELA and math are average or above average when we look at our district norm comparisons. We are increasing restorative practices, again, just in years two and three. Uh, year two at high school, year three at middle school of implementation and already seeing um increased. Restorative practices and and in some spaces decreasing exclusionary discipline. Most importantly, there were no areas of our student results policies of either student result policy two or student result policy three. That were marked as progress needed due to lack of achievement or growth as outlined by the established metrics. So there were no red areas on our SR twos and SR threes for secondary schools. Our challenges and areas of improvement are real. We need to continue to work toward equitable outcomes for students academically, behaviorally and socially emotionally. We know we need to progress and accelerate outcomes, if we don't accelerate outcomes for our black students, our Hispanic Latino students. Our students who are two or more races, as well as our students with disabilities and multilingual learners. We are not going to close the gaps, if our white students and Asian students continue to perform higher increase. We need to have a higher rate of uh increased performance, attendance, decreased exclusionary discipline to close those gaps. Um, it is important to note that the data that's been shared in this presentation is not yet able to be calculated. Among the varying ethnic groups within the Asian racial demographic groups, this is something that has been brought up. Um, in our schools, at the school board and in conversations um with many educators and it something at the time is that. The data is collected due to the um racial database of Asian and. We know that's an area that we want to lean into and look at the different ethnic groups. Another challenger area for improvement is this alignment of restorative practices, our behavior matrix and our student information system or Infinite Campus. Along with our data visualization platforms, so Edgoclimber and NextPath, each of these four areas intersect. Kind of like a clover leaf in helping our schools be able to make sense of the results they're getting, right? So we need to have alignment between what our expectations are for restorative practices, we need to build restoration into the behavior matrix. We need to have clear language that aligns to both the behavior matrix and allow for restorative practices. In Infinite Campus because that's where behavioral entries are are put in by our staff. And then have that same terminology in our in our visualization platform that are pulling these charts you've seen today, Edgoclimber um or NextPath. And so that's an area of work that's underway, um, and will probably take place in across this upcoming school year. Our ACT results in reading and math, while it's a strength that we're comparing nationally pretty well, uh quite well actually. The performance trend is pretty flat and slightly declining over time, all things considered, and so this is a performance trend. That needs attention, disruption and improvement. Also, when we're looking at B minus or better grades in the four core content area at high school. We know that if we want more students to be college and career ready, we have to shift that bell curve curve closer towards. Uh, eighty percent of students achieving at those levels. Lastly, attention is needed to understand the data story around social emotional learning competencies, particularly aligned with emotional development. That negative growth data trend we've we're seeing across the past three years. Definitely needs some attention and um some disruption. Our vision for the future is um, we are working toward implementing the next three elements of the instructional framework, so. Learning partnerships, which is in the area of environment, multiple means to demonstrate understanding, which is in the area. Of experiences and culturally responsive, which is in the area of equity. Is the work and will be um aligned to the work we're currently doing. But will, as I said early on in this presentation, have some additional supports, strategies and skills. For our educators particularly to engage with neurodiverse students and our multilingual linguistic students in new and better ways. We need coherent, continued coherence, our hundred-day planning cycles are improving outcomes, that one thing this has shown. Uh, across the past couple of hours of this presentation is we're improving and we're doing it because we're coherent and consistent. Um, and we're also focused on leadership coaching, so our directors in TLE are um collaborating to coach leaders. On a regular uh regular schedule to improve their leadership outcomes and to improve their professional practice. We have just entered the winter hundred-day planning um part, the SP one hundred plan of the school year. And so the strategies are deepening to support schools theories of action and the adult practice goals and adjustments. In order to solve that problem of practice. We just passed a successful referendum thanks to the community's investment in our students and staff and so. We have innovation opportunities, particularly um thinking differently about what the junior and senior year of high school may look like. And then we are updating curriculum, so middle school has implementation of English Language Arts new curriculum. Uh, both universal core and supplemental instruction this year, ninth through twelfth grade is rewriting their high school curriculum. And then math, uh, middle school and high school math are going undergoing curriculum updates. So we are in the midst of implementing a new scope and sequence of coursework. And maybe looking at different instructional materials for next school year, and so that's what's coming up in the future as well. What supports are needed, well, we need main to maintain our focus and integrity over the next several years of the instructional frameworks execution. I can't think of anything more disruptive than impeding. On the progress we're making on the implementation of our instructional framework. From the training, um, that's aligned to those practices, to the observable behaviors. To thinking about our practice profiles and what's expected from our adults to our hiring practices. Uh, we need to maintain focus and integrity over the next several years. To continue to implement not just the next three, but then the following and subsequent three after that. We need to limit distractions that pull time, energy and resources away from the necessary deep implementation of our curriculum. Um, and our engagement strategies. Specifically from the board, continued advocacy, um, you may have heard me say this before, for transportation across our community. If we want to have innovative programs, um, we spoke to back in October, the off-site opportunities that exist for students. The college and career opportunities that exist, transportation is a barrier. And so whether that is through local funding or really through uh advocacy with the city. Around expanding busing opportunities uh or taxing Ubering opportunities, um, that's definitely an area that I advocate. For additional support in, and then lastly. Um, continued advocacy and support of high levels of compensation and benefits for our faculty and staff, we know that if we have the best educators. Who feel valued, who feel appreciated, who are compensated well with the incredible benefits packages that they've continued to have over the past several years. And have the best educators here to serve the best students, and so our board has been extremely supportive of um ensuring that happens. And so uh continue to ask that that be considered into the future as well. Now we use this slogan here like no one else, like nowhere else, and we really are, uh, we are a unique district and we have. Uh, a community of schools, both at secondary and also at elementary that are like nowhere else, and I hope that the results that were shared. Um, throughout today helps exemplify our story and also helps disrupt some myths that may be in our community. Um, around our performance because we certainly are uh trending in the right direction. And so with that, I close, um, I want to express gratitude for our secondary leaders, for our educators, our program coordinators. Um, and all of the others faculty and staff that serve our students every day. These are a reflection of their leadership efforts and impact that we are beginning to make the gains that we are. And um, we're scheduled to come back to revisiting the secondary schools' results. On April twenty-eighth and then again on July twenty-eighth, so as I said in the beginning, if there's anything that you know you look forward to differently in those future presentations. Uh, much of this information won't change between now and then, so it won't be quite as long, um, please let me know.
And I look forward to answering any questions you may have regarding our secondary schools' results. At our upcoming board meeting on January twenty-seventh, thank you.